...the regular meeting of the Caravelle City Commission. It's Thursday, May 4th, 2017, 6:00 PM at the Caravelle City Complex. We'd like to ask Commissioner Allen to say the prayer and then we'll do the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Please stand.
I'm glad the Father and Son have been so grateful that we could come before He tonight in this meeting and deal with things that pertains to the life of our wonderful city. It should be honest. We're thankful indeed for the rain we got today and hope it hits more pretty soon. They should be with us in our judgments tonight so we might be fair and open and honest, that we might do the right thing for all the things that come before us. We ask this in the name of Your Son and our Savior, Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. The Jesus is the fire. The Jesus is the light. The Jesus is the river. The river is the water. The one nation under God, and the visible, the living, the eternal for all.
Okay. We'll move on to the consent agenda now, and it has the April 6, 2017 minutes and the April 18 special meeting minutes. Did you all have a chance to review that?
Yes.
Okay, and then we also have the attorneys' invoices for the CRA and the general fund. If everyone had a chance to review that, then I'll ask if someone would like to enter the motion.
I'll make the motion if that's okay.
Okay. All right. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so we have the motion by Commissioner Massey and the second by Commissioner Mathis. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. And we'll move forward to public comment. Is there any public comment?
Please say it.
Okay, all right. I'm forward. Mr. Michael Pace. You'll just introduce yourself.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Michael Pace, and as some of you may know...
If you'll use the microphone so that we can record, that's how we record things.
So I'd like to announce...
Okay, that's good.
As some of you may know, my wife and I own and operate a sunroof interior. And one of the things that we do is professional photo restoration. And in the process of doing our work, we had a client present a classic image of Caravelle, and he presented it as a brochure, but requested it made into a poster. So this is the actual image, doesn't mean remember this. This was the brochure from the Chamber of Commerce in 1963. And so we, it was quite damaged, but we restored it.
Michael, why don't you take your picture? Actually, the lady that the picture is pictured in that is, happens to be in the meeting tonight.
That's correct.
Okay, fantastic. But I think it turned out that way.
I know.
So this was presented to us by Mr. Bill Snyder of Martha's House Insurance. So several people suggested that we maybe put this together as it might be appropriate for a sign of as you enter the town from the east. And so I proceeded to try to find the location, and the one that's on the handout there is, if you're familiar, is with southeast Fifth Street, and it currently is dilapidated and has several years of bollion or growth. So real simple is our proposal, my wife and I, is to cover the cost of doing the maintenance on the landscaping and produce a sign of the city's choice. This necessarily need to be the sign. This is, this is what someone had suggested. And what we would like to do is because Camp Jordan Johnson is relocating, there's a tag, a little footer sign, it's called, that's below that you can't see it, and we would like to be able to put our commercial interest, represent our commercial interest on that small sign.
All right. You know, we generally, during public comment, don't take, I mean, we don't, we like to have due process.
Sure.
To make a written proposal.
Yes.
And bring that back to us, you know, and let the attorney review it, and we are offering to fund the entire sign.
Yes, we are. We are offering to fund it and produce the sign.
And then in return for your little advertisement on the box.
That's right. That's correct. I actually have a written proposal, but being a sign shop, I printed it in the last minute and I don't have it with me, so. So we actually have a written proposal that I wish to have.
Well, we'll let the attorney look at that and let him find out if we can have, is that sign...
Well, that's, I was gonna ask Russell, because I know we went round and round and round the first time when it came to Jordan Johnson sign, we kept getting notice of violations. So I was gonna ask if he had any insight on that.
Yeah, there are restrictions on what you can put up without a permit. This may require a permit.
It will require a permit.
It is a city sign, but if it has your advertising sign, it may require a permit.
And I had him check into it.
Right. And the case on that is that the state would then reclassify that as an outdoor advertising sign, so the media would have to reflect it in private interest, would have to be approved by the state, and they would come and tag it and put a permit on it. But they told me that I first would need to proceed and get approval from the city, and then the state would look at it, and only in regards to the right of way and a safety issue. They don't determine whether the content or the media is appropriate, but it would rec, right now, the sign is classified as only city property. They did tell me that Camp Jordan Johnson was there because it's considered a city entity.
It's a non-corp, yes.
Yes, well, that's, they had that classified.
Shouldn't risk.
Did you find out how much one a permit costs? Because I know they're very expensive, from what I understand.
No, I haven't investigated the cost of it, but they have, I have started the process to find out if it was feasible, and they did tell me yes.
From what I understand, the sign permit for DOT is priced at...
Sure.
So what we need to do, because we, I try not to have, you know, any major voting on any major issues during public comment, because, you know, we're kind of blind side.
Right. I wasn't looking for a yes or a no.
And we're just trying to figure out, start with the process.
Go ahead, and let's get it on the agenda. Is that all right? Did we put it on the agenda next, for next go-round first? And then bring your proposal in between now and then, and then, you know, we'll, after that, we'll direct possibly the attorney and the engineer to, you know, to start work, take a look at it, and try to find out how we can proceed, if we can proceed.
Yes, I understand.
And as far as the, who would be paying the fees and who knew when the perm yet sent, and you let out the perm yet.
Okay. Okay, fantastic.
Okay.
Thank you.
And thank you. That's a very interesting poster there. There's Miss Pat Bracken, she, that's her picture.
Shelley Ralph in that picture, and a guy, Steinman.
Trying to make it look like it was a friend.
It's very ironic, because neither of those people generally want to be... Okay.
Mayor?
Yes, sir?
I'd say if you'd like to see a good example of his work, come by to my gallery. He's got a Takes Hill sign to put up there. It's on four by four, and it's just brilliantly pretty. And I know he uses good ink, and you see the one that's down there now is faded because of using cheap ink that fades under light, and it's an eyesore as it is now, and something certainly needs to be got about it.
We just replaced the info board for the Takes Hill, and the history museum just had it renovated, and we made a frame of a hundred-year-old hard pine that was donated by Mr. Allen, and it's actually the lumberers from the Takes Hill State Forest. So it's quite a nice piece we just hung at this point.
Well, we just, you know, we don't have the funding to replace it, so it would've been replaced, and I don't know if it was done with a group at once, how the sign got there, you know.
Very... Subtractions paid for a part of trying to put a sign together like that through the committee is not recommended for me.
I understand that.
But it was, we all paid for part of it, all the attractions.
Okay, all right. Is there any more pub, public comment? Okey-dokey. Then we'll move on to commissioners' reports, and Commissioner Walton.
All righty then, Commissioner Mathis.
I have one.
Okay. Commissioner Massey.
I'll hold it if you do the note.
All righty, and how about Commissioner Allen?
I have one.
Okay, all right then. Yes, I do have the report. I've been busy, as usual, but it's only one page this time, I'm gonna try to make it quick. On April the 12th, Courtney, William, Dustin and I attended a two-hour workshop regarding contraband coming into Franklin Correctional Institution through the community inmate workforce. Very informative to someone like me, and Courtney, we learned, in just two hours, we learned a lot, what can be done, those cells are like the dean. And William and Dustin stayed for the remainder of the day for their non-D.C. certification refresher course. And then later on, April the 12th, I attended the TDC Board Meeting, and the TDC right now is working on their draft preliminary budget for 2017-18. Then even later, on April the 12th, I attended the Restore Advisory Committee. I immediately reported the outcome of that meeting to all who have expressed to me that they have an interest. I want to go ahead and publicly announce, and I have sent to Cameron, Leslie and Mr. Large, I want to announce that the required workshop to submit a project for the Restore Multi-Year Implementation Plan is on May 16th, 4:00 PM, Franklin County Annex Building, where they hold the regular county commission meeting in Mackelash. This meeting is an open meeting, and anyone can attend, so, you know, whoever, it's a required meeting to be able to submit an application, and that is the same day as our CRA meeting. And then with the Commission held special meeting on April the 18th, and we'll talk about all the items that were under that agenda this meeting, as a follow-up. On April the 20th, Courtney and I attended the Northwest Florida Water Management District Technical Planning Meeting, held at the Anna Complex in East Point. It was a workshop regarding application for projects under the Water Management District's Surface Water Improvement and Management Program, or SWIM. The deadline to submit a funding application for a project with that program is July 1st. The application must be submitted through their online portal. Russell, Large has been notified regarding submitting a project from our capital improvements plan, and I hope and suspect he'll make a recommendation to us. On April the 27th, Courtney, Mr. Tim Sullivan and I met with FDOT Airport Inspection Managers. They conducted the annual airport inspection, and he'll report on that. And one of the inspectors, Mr. Greg Jones, is the aviation director overseeing the new FAA airport zoning, and he was there and he actual, actually gave us a little brief preview, and he actually offered to assist the city with the unfunded FAA mandate, and he's gonna, I thought he would provide a list of consultants, but I don't know, you can report and let them ask questions. It's, it's a huge job, it's a complicated issue, and it's just a lot that's been put forth for us and everyone. On April the 28th, we learned the land, this is good news, the Land Award Conservation Grant in the amount of $95,000 was awarded to the CRA. We applied for that through the CRA for renovations and repairs to the Marine Street Pavilion and the waterfront dock, and then the CRA is matching this grant with an additional $95,000, and that project, we hope, will start by the end of the year, you know how things move slow. And we're gonna keep the Riverfront Festival in mind, and we'll make sure Susan understands that, because we know that the pavilion is used and a dock for Governor Stump. And then this past Tuesday, Courtney and I, for our regular water and sewer department meeting, we visited the Caravelle Water Treatment Plant. They've got some new filter systems, they should be finished with the installation by now, to filter water, freshwater directly out of well raw, or is what they call it, wells, out of Wells Corner Three. And then we looked at some projects that they need to have included on their next budget for 1718. Yesterday afternoon, Courtney, Miranda and I met with Mr. Gay and Miss Wood of Centennial Bank for about an hour and a half. Our discussion regarded financing a new location for City Hall, and we had a lot of questions and answers, and they covered new construction and existing buildings, and we'll talk about that, I'll have a report on that under that item on this agenda. I want to report and announce that any open trucks or trailers hauling debris to the county landfill must be tarred, otherwise there's an charge of a fine, $10,000, if you show up and your debris isn't tarred. It didn't happen to me, I'm just reporting it. Franklin County recycle bins loaded, you know, we have them located over in West Ballfield. After hearing discussions at the recent county commission meeting regarding recycling, they're having a problem, they can't sell the recycling materials, the place in Jacksonville has closed up where they take glass, the recycling materials, they can't make the money back on what it's costing to operate the recycling program. And they're taking still a lot of garbage, household garbage, out of the recycle bins, and if that keeps up, they may, they may just take away the recycling bins. So I just want folks to know, please keep their household garbage out of the recycling bins, or else we're gonna lose them, and I'm looking at the video camera, so the folks watching us from afar, then no. And then I just wanna announce real quick, we have a guest speaker this evening, Mr. Nick Harwell. He's here from Tallahassee to talk to us during the marking and export item, and he's gotta go back to Tallahassee, so I'm gonna ask everyone to stack their force to try to be as good as you can. All right, thank you very much, and we'll move on to the next item, which would be Mr. Large with Inobia.
Thank you, I will be quick. We have our two grant projects that should be kicking up in the next month or so. The Scope Grant from DOT and the CBG Grant on the City Hall, we know that Thurmond is providing us with the geographic survey, so that we can begin to do some duty elements in terms of developing a concept plan from that. On the Water Management District Grant, again, the sewer has been awarded the water, I have not heard that it has made it back onto the budget at this point. The Restore Act Workshop, we will attend that, and there, I did see some discussion about possibility of the water portion for my house estates being funded under that program, or at least potentially, right. And then we are aware the SWIM's deadline on the 1st of July, and we have a list, a list of projects, and we'll discuss that with you.
Okay, and he, they, Mr. Thorpe, you kept talking about unpaid roads, you kept, you know, that subject kept coming up, and we've got a couple that y'all have already designed or...
Yes.
Have almost, I think, maybe shovel ready in the way. I don't know if they have, we haven't permitted them, have you liked...
On Avenue C, we have.
Avenue C.
I don't think that was on the list.
Okay.
That would be a separate, separate project, but that would be the only one that's...
Avenue C in CRA?
Yes.
But no, that CRA's funding that, so I'm thinking Fifth Street, Southeast Fifth by Sands, or Southeast D, East and West Sands, as far as...
Right, and I don't think those are ready per se.
Uh-huh, okay.
But they're certainly there.
Okay. All right. Y'all have any questions for Mr. Large?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, then Miss Tam, our waterfront partnership.
You got with your report here, the two-page, two-page report. Last month, you may remember, I don't know if you remember, that I was out sick, and I, in the heat of my 104 fever, I sent you something from six years ago that was totally unrelated. It was in March, but that was the only thing that was related to that. So instead of, I redid the correct one for this past March and added April on to it, so it's a couple pages. And just the short version of it, the majority of our activity in the last month has been has to do with both hosting and organizing the Riverfront Festival, the Historical Museum actually organized and created that Avenue B, which had all the educational information, the rocks, the touch tanks, and all the critters and so forth, were all there on Avenue B, and which actually had a fabulous attendance, and we were really happy that so many of those people were fascinating to talk to. So that worked out really well, and the other thing we've been doing in the last six weeks or so has been grant management, and we are, we finally got permission from the state to spend the money that we got awarded in our, I mean, last July 1st, and they hadn't given us permission to spend it until February. So, but since then, we've advertised it and gotten bids and gotten a contractor. So the contractor that was selected is Gentry Builders out of Panacea, I don't know if you know of any Gentry, but he apparently has done work for the city in years past, and he's also done a lot of historical work. But he got that bid, and we're beginning to prepare the building for the installation of the emergency stairs on the back, and there are a few things that Courtney's working with me on to get them done, that have to be done prior to put, if we put, there's a power line that's very low back there, and if we leave it where it is, when you walk up the steps, when you get to the, to the landing, the power line is about four inches from the edge of the metal stairs, we didn't think that seemed like a good idea. So we're asking the power company to relocate or tighten up, I think it's just real low. And then the phone, the phone wires are all connected to the tree, so they've been connected to the tree for years and years and years. So that needs to be disconnected and connected to a pole somewhere. So little things like that that have to be done, and then the big thing is to remove the septic tanks that were in the back of the building, and there's issues about that, but I think we're gonna be able to, I think we're gonna be able to get it all done before the end of the month, don't you? I think so. We're, they're working along. And then, in the meantime, the grant for the 18, the same type of grant, $50,000 for renovation, can do for the 18, 2018, 2019 year. And so I prepared that and submitted it Monday morning, and that one will then include the plaster repairs and the wood rot upstairs that you talked to me about when you visited the mayor, the wooden floor restoration and painting the walls in woodwork, and trim on the second floor, as well as preparing this, bringing the stairs up to compliance for the Florida Building Code on the inside, and then to replace the outside doors. So that's the, there's a whole other phase in there somewhere we've already been indicated for if we get the money goes that far. So we're, we're up to stage five of the renovations to the building, and we've only got two more to go. And if I can find one to do the elevator vault at one time, that would be, we'll do that. And otherwise, I gave you a copy of the little reminder about our next speaker, about civil war in this area, and Dale Cox from Two Egg has done a new book on what happened on the Chattahoochee River, but this particular one is about the USS Chattahoochee, which is a, USS Chattahoochee was on the Apalachicola River. The boat was on the Apalachicola River when it exploded during the Civil War, and that's what it's been looking about. So I think it will be an interesting speaker's opportunity, and we'd love for you all to come out and help us spread the word that it's coming along. Do you have any questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you, and I enjoyed the culture crawl. Thank you for, for working on that, and thank you, you know, because you weren't here last time, but it was very nice. I toured the Moore House that I didn't go back to the Riverfront Festival. I hope they had a lot of people in it at Riverfront. That was very nice of them to keep that open, but that's what we wanted, you know, with the CRA funding and the purchase and the beginning of the part of the contract, so we're just real proud of it, they've done a good job, and I hope y'all took the opportunity to go up and see it. Very good. All right, thank you, Tam. Okay, then, the EDC, EDC Council of the Council, Mr. Dave Butler, do you have anything for us this evening? All right, then we'll move on to the Caravelle Aviation Advisory Board.
Good evening. Everybody get the report here. We had the important inspection, still running problems with trees out there, they're growing as fast as we cut them down, so we've got more that have to be cut down, but they did pass inspection, and he pointed out others that are gonna be a problem next year, so we're looking at trying to use some of the money we have for the airport parking apron to, to, so we can clear out some more of those trees. The hangar renovations, I put down they were complete, but I went in there after it rained, and they were supposed to repair the leaks in the, in the roof, and every one of the hangers is leaking, not as bad as before, it's still, so I've got pictures, and we go with them, they're gonna come, they, they were planning on coming to do a water test to get on the roof before we paid any money out of it, so I'll report that to them, and hopefully they get it fixed, get away with that. The box hangar, we're just waiting for the contract from the construction company. We're working on the JSEP, which is the funding for FDOT for the airports and the planning. Courtney and I have been in a couple of meetings, if you want to go, the consultants come down next week and to, to walk through the airport again to, and help us make our planning. The airport zoning, as the man said, Greg Jones was here, an inspector for the airport, and he was talking about the, the need to take action on the airport zoning. I'm not familiar with zoning rules or regulations at all, but I do know the, the airport layout, so I spoke with Chester Reese from the PNC, and myself, Chester, Courtney, and hopefully more on the PNC Board, will meet with, with him when he comes to visit. This is, has to be done by July 1st, and it also includes an intergovernmental agreement with the county for the, for the county's property that is adjacent to the airport or in the flight path of the airport. One of the, the next step in, in getting, we're getting, trying to get that NTIAS program at the funding, and the JSEP and the MAS program is, is the beginning of it. FDOT has advisors, and we need to get a general aviation consulting service to help us move forward. I've got the qualific, the request of qualifications written there, of what we need, and the advertisement for it, and would I like permission from the commissioners to, to go ahead and advertise those services?
Okay, and Mr. Hartman, have you seen that, that...
I have, I have.
...advertisement and spec, qualifications, specifications?
Yeah, I did see it, I have not gone through it, and then what we can add is just, I'll make any comments, revisions, going back to Tim and Keisha, you made it that way.
But I've spent some time with Mr. Sullivan at the airport and, and DOT folks regarding that, and been to the Apalachicola Airport Advisory Board meeting, and we, our airport really needs an engineering firm that specializes in aviation and rural airports, and that had experience in working with rural airports, and this is what you're gonna reach out for. And, you know, we, it's a good example, we can look at, you know, Russell and Inobia, they have experience working with rural cities, and they, they're always there anytime we need them, and the airport, for the airport, we need someone who understands all of these items about airports and engineering, and so, and they would be there and be willing to, to help out. So I, I would suggest that we move forward and take action to advertise. We have a couple of engineers right now that help, but just go ahead and give a firm engineer. So would someone like to...
I'll make the motion for us to move forward to advertise for engineering for the airport on that.
And would someone like to second that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, and that's Mathis, so we have a, to advertise for airport requests for bids on an engineering firm. Motion by Commissioner Massey, second by Commissioner Mathis. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Okay.
Thank you. Last, I want to recognize Nick Harwell from FSHU, he had come down to look at the airport in the east, was very instrumental in getting Lake City Airport renovated, and it's a beautiful, beautiful... a beautiful, beautiful place over there now. Uh, and so, he's been assisting me in, in, uh, in the steps that we need to take going forward, so I just want to thank him for standing here tonight.
Okay, do you all have any questions for Mr. Sullivan?
Uh, one thing, Dan, I guess I should ask is, when we do the meeting for the zoning, are you interested in?
Are you doing meeting, where's that?
It's gonna be, well, I don't think we, we've had, we don't have.
Yeah, every day.
Yeah, I'll, I'll definitely sit in front of that. But I think we'll end up having to write all that.
Yes, yes. Well, I, I read a couple of the emails and it's, it's way over my head there. So, good luck to you all working on that. That is one big job right there and it's an unfunded mandate. Every airport in the state of Florida has to, well, it's FAA mandate.
It's FAA, yeah. But this is a Florida statute that was changed to, to meet FAA standards.
All right, okay, so every airport in the state is part of it at this point, don't you? Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Hartman, do you have a report for us?
I do not. I'll mention mine under the others.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Hartman? All right, and then, Ms. Courtney, do you have a report for us?
I do.
Okay.
I have two, I want to report on. One is a couple of months ago, we reported that we were gonna be making some administrative changes to the personnel policy, mostly, we, mostly on disciplinary actions for employees with inmate certification, how to, how to handle that in the future. So, we've made those changes and it's just one paragraph that we put in under transfers and it says that if they lose their, their certification or license and they cannot get on that, if they're, they're not eligible for a transfer, they'll, they'll be terminated. Um, then also with the personnel policy, we'll have a one page, employees with inmate certification and an attachment that's specific to employees with inmate certification.
And it addresses, I know one item about using, they don't, they don't, can't use a cell phone, smartphone.
Personal cell phone, that they just have their city flip phone and are not allowed to carry their smartphones with them, um, that, that they're subject to be searched at any time by either the, you know, the DOC employees or the department head, you know, anybody that comes out, myself or the mayor, you know, we can search your vehicles. Um, do they have to, they have to recertify as needed with the department? That's basically all it has on there, it's just the four.
Okay.
Would we have a task for that job, Courtney? Do we, um, do y'all pick like certain ones and go ahead and have a backroom check to make sure they can, um, before you bring it to the board we hire?
Yes. Okay.
William usually gives us three.
And when you check them, three. I'm thinking last time we, we went ahead and sent them to the DOC, their names to the D, and let them check.
And then my other item to report on is that we got the lease termination for the GUSC signed and, and we're, we're done with that.
Very good. Do y'all have any questions for, uh, Courtney? Anyone? Okay, well, I thank you very much. And then, uh, Ms. Keisha, our city clerk, uh, do you have anything for us, Susan?
Um, I needed to report the vendor with our fireworks. Um, he has canceled last minute. So, I reached out to some other companies and it looks like we've been getting a really good deal from the guy we've been using. Um, so I got a quote and they won't, um, they said they normally start at fifteen thousand dollars and our budget is five thousand dollars. Um, they, he said he might could do ten, but he can't go any lower than ten, especially with the last minute, you know, with the bin right here. Everybody's pretty much booked up before the July.
And I understand, uh, Keisha got, she generally handles this project. She got a last minute notice that the regular provider, fireworks provider can't provide fireworks. Don't look at me, you know, I'm the cheap one, so. I don't know what to say. And that's a, that's a double on us.
I say ten thousand dollars, not me.
That's right.
Yeah. We got a lot of leads. Well, that's a lot of money.
Well, each one of us get a wrong channel.
Yeah. Nothing what was happening.
Now, uh, we pay, how much do we pay for, uh, the CRA pays for the fireworks at Holiday on the Harbor? What, what was, what was the budget for that?
Twenty-five hundred. And we pay five thousand at Fourth of July and it's the, it's the same show basically, but we built.
Nine, ten thousand?
We, well, we used to pay this guy, to the guy that does it, ten thousand dollars and when he cut our budget, he agreed to keep doing it for us.
So, we can't plan on letting the fire department shoot them off?
No, there's too much liability in that. We've had, we've done that before.
I know, I know they used to do it.
And what we can consider is, y'all don't wanna do it on Fourth of July, the man may be able to make arrangements to come. If you wanna do it the weekend before or the day before or.
People's gonna be back on by the end of July.
And at one point, I thought maybe, uh, we could take it to the CRA and ask them to take the, not have it at Holiday on the Harbor and take that amount, twenty-five hundred and apply it to the Fourth of July, but that's still not gonna, um.
I know in the past, we had, um, private donations, you know, can't, probably out there.
So, you're saying we need private, I believe, we need private donations to help out, like somewhere around three thousand dollars worth. And then if we did that, we might not have fireworks for the Holiday on the Harbor. So, we, and, and you don't know, you didn't ask him what he was gonna, what he would charge for the Holiday on the Harbor fireworks either, right?
No, I didn't and I haven't, the guy we were using only can't, can't, it's just the Fourth of July. So, he didn't say that we would, he said he would understand if we started a new relationship with someone else, but he was probably kinda laughing in the back of his head thinking, you'll be back, you know, so. So, he's still around and he, he doesn't, he just, he's limited staff this year and I'm sure he's got bigger projects that take precedence. So, I haven't, I haven't even looked into Holiday on the Harbor yet, I just been scrambling to try and find something for Fourth of July.
So, it's out that the fire department can't do it either? Is that a law now? Or just, we just don't let the fire department do it no more?
We just don't. We had somebody injured and we started using a private company. They carried their own liability insurance. And they're trying, they're trying, you really need to be trained to, to handle, you know, those big shells. Now, Sopchoppy does do their own, but they have to be trained and certified at the beginning of the year and then they buy the shells from this same company that I was speaking with. And the price difference really isn't that much more for the setup. On another, on a good note, I passed my certified flood plane manager exam, so I am a certified flood, flood plane manager and we will be entering back into the CRS and start getting some discounts on our flood insurance policies.
Very good. All right, well, I, I would say let us think about the fireworks. We'll talk about it, bring it up at the CRA meeting, we'll talk about that.
Okay. He's gonna, I mean, he's gonna need to make arrangements.
I don't know what to say, I really, I really.
What's the deadline on getting that up? I mean, a commitment on?
January.
Oh.
January of this year?
Uh, this is really last minute for them to scramble around. But the guy, it just so happened, they got the extra shooter that they have lives in Marianna and Marianna's shooting theirs on the third. So, he was willing to come down to, to Carebel and shoot them off the floor.
Okay, ten or fifteen thousand?
Yeah, or we could maybe try and reschedule it for the weekend and we can get our original vendor maybe to do it for the five, so.
But I think that this people be gone by then.
That people come from town, lots of people come to town to see our, our fireworks show from, from Tallahassee, it's around from here.
What day of the week is Fourth of July?
Tuesday this year.
We're animating for a long weekend.
And I know Apalachicola does their show on the third and I think they purposely do that so that everybody can do both shows. And they have a more of a festival type all day in the.
We use that important July festival.
Well, um, I know you've heard this before, but not too often. I'll link to pleasure forward, uh, how you all would like to go forward or not.
Try and we tell, don't talk that.
All right, and meanwhile, we can put out some feelers, we can talk down to the CRA, get them up here. All right, is that okay with everyone?
I think really that is a problem.
It's like literally burning money. So, I know it is nice and even my husband says it, it promotes, boosts the morale, but it's, and when it gets out there, the cost of it.
Yeah, especially if you're trying to get a city home and all, you know, that is a lot of.
Okay, we'll move on then. We have a, uh, resolution, uh, tonight at the public hearing, resolution zero nine two oh one seven, the Franklin County Flood Mitigation Plan and the last, Mr. Hartman, read that, Forrest.
All right, resolution oh nine dash twenty seventeen, Carabelle City Commission, Franklin County, for, resolution of City Carabelle adopting Franklin County Flood Mitigation Plan dated twelve twenty-one twenty sixteen, whereas the Carabelle City Commission recognizes the threat that natural hazards posed to people and property within the community and whereas the City of Carabelle has been an active participant in multi-hazard mitigation plan hereby known as the Franklin County Flood Mitigation Plan dated December twenty-one twenty sixteen in accordance with the Disaster Mitigation Act of two thousand. And whereas Franklin County Flood Mitigation Plan dated December twenty-one twenty sixteen identifies mitigation and actions to reduce or eliminate long-term risks to people and property in Franklin County from the impacts of future hazards and disasters. And whereas the adoption of the Carabelle City Commission demonstrates their commitment to hazard mitigation and achieving goals outlined in Franklin County Flood Mitigation Plan dated December twenty-one twenty sixteen, now therefore, therefore be resolved by the Carabelle City Commission that adopts the Franklin County Flood Mitigation Plan to reflect the current need and citizens' desire to identify and implement hazard mitigation initiatives that will reduce the county's susceptibility to numerous hazards.
Okay, thank you. And I'm just gonna ask Ms. Keisha, our, our flood plane manager and clerk, to briefly explain the resolution to us.
Basically, we meet with the county and the city of Apalachicola and the road department, police department. We develop plans, this plan, um, to, to, um, basically note, put on notice what we know floods, what needs to be mitigated, which we, you know, to fix it and then we prioritize it in, um, into the most, you know, which one. And then if we do have a storm and we get the, um, grant monies and we, we put, add projects and take them off as we complete them. So, I have a complete copy of the plan. I didn't print it out for everybody 'cause it's, um, several pages, but if anybody wants it, I can email it to them, so.
All right, does anyone have questions regarding this resolution to adopt the Flood Mitigation Plan?
I have it on my motion.
All right, so we have a motion to adopt the resolution by Commissioner Massey. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second by Commissioner Walden. Uh, is there any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? And that motion carries. All right then, thank you. We'll move on to new business, item number one, uh, discussion of possible action concerning speed calming devices on the three hundred block of East Meridian Avenue. And I know we have Mr. Tommy Jack Massey. If he'll come up and tell us what the issues are there in Meridian, we'll be glad to hear it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. And use the microphones so we can record, if you don't mind.
This is Tommy Massey. And I'm here about block three hundred, Meridian Drive. All right.
Your, your mic's not, is your mic on, Mr. Tom, Tom? There you go.
It is. I'm Tommy Jack Massey. Yeah, boy just about knows me, very few don't. But, uh, been here quite a while. The other lady that's, uh, grocery showed you, that'd be my first wife, she's, she's proper Melinda Massey. But, uh, but, uh, problem is, is the traffic has really increased on that drive, especially on weekends when, um, the kids is out, they like to play on that hill too. And I don't want nothing to stop them, everyone is, but it's the skateboard, rode the town. And they like to ride bikes down it and things. My wife, she rides with family of five on that hill and they all got skinned up on that hill. But, uh, anyway, Massey for a speed bump or whatever it's, you know, it is, I don't know, is to slow them down. We put a slow sign down there, it don't mean nothing. And the speed limit, I think in the city is thirty-five mile an hour. So, police department, uh, slowing down, doing good, maybe fifteen mile an hours, speed limit, but I'm aware again, in force to not hide with me. But, other day, there was two little girls, I say little girls, young ladies, they're probably from thirteen to seventeen, that neighborhood. They've been there swimming and, and couple of them, whatever it is, they're somewhere swimming, they had beds, it's on towels wrapped around them. And, uh, the youngest one, when she got on top of the hill, I got to a truck, looked in the mirror, she wrapped up in this towel and laid down and rode down the hill. And Chris wrote, I says, she would've stood and chatted somebody to come over to the hill. And you can't see, I couldn't see school boats coming over there one morning and I pulled out in front of school bus and let her get with school bus. And, um, it was right at daylight, just before daylight. And, uh, but, and I had backed in, I didn't back out, normally I'd always back in and start to pull out. Yeah, she, he always turned around and pulls out. And Jack says he has to pull out, he can pull out, but, uh, it is a bad situation there. Somebody's eventually gonna get hurt there and city of people, one of them won't suit. And, uh, it's coming, it's just a matter of time. I don't, but I hope it never happens, but I had some good thought about it. And that's all I have to say, I want to just let up to the Lord, whatever they think that we were, once the sign petition there is one that's mostly effective. And we would all appreciate it, that's me, being speaker for, that's really done here and the rest of, uh, I miss the South Shore Ministry tonight to be here. And, uh, Jack says he's, he's there, but, uh, he asked you out, he was supposed to be here, but it's not. But I appreciate y'all's time and appreciate anything you can do.
Okay, hold, uh, don't leave us now.
Okay.
Does anyone have questions?
Yeah, when you talk about calming advisory, talk about something like out of the, uh, St. James, the golf course. That's a post-oh.
Right.
Something that'll break your car up.
Right. And, uh, I, I think one round on top of the hill would probably do it. I told William, he said you need trees, he thinks, you need to slow down before you get to the top of the hill. But, uh, and, uh, but I don't know.
Okay, does anyone else have questions? Okay, so, Mr. Massey, I just wanna make sure I'm, I'm understanding what, you know, what you're saying is happening and, and I want the chief to, to, you know, be alerted that, now, first of all, you're saying you feel like they're speeding here, right?
I don't feel like, I know it.
Okay, you know they are. And, and I, I hear you on that because I live on Ryan Drive, it's flat, thoroughfare and I mean to tell you, you know, we put more speeding signs up or, you know, speed limit signs that made them go faster. You know, we put more signs, they went faster. Okay, so I understand youngsters are playing in the street.
Yes.
Yeah, uh-huh, like they're skateboarding and riding their bikes and, and that kind of thing.
Right.
Okay.
Which is nothing wrong with that, I'm sure.
And then, but you have blind driveways because the hill is so steep.
Right.
Okay.
If you're just driving up the hill and look, you see when you see the car, you'll see that. If you're just driving on the hill and look, you see when you see the car, you see how steep that hill is, is as steep as you just walked.
It's probably as steep as Hill and Caravelle.
It's as steep that I would walk down the hill because I woke my chest.
Or the Morehouse driveway is steep as well. So, you know, I understand. I, I did ask, I went ahead and sent another to our engineer. Did you get that, Mr. Large?
I did, I did.
And I, I was involved with the, that Speed Hunt project out at St. James Bay. It went through the Franklin County Community Traffic Safety Team. And they, they brought all of their issues and we worked it out and then it was taken, it was covered under the Franklin County Board of County Commissioners, but the homeowners' association paid the engineering fees out there and then half the project. But were you able to bring us some information on that, Mr. Large?
Uh, yes.
Okay, we'll let him tell us about it then. Okay, and then we're not finished yet.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
Yes, the project that you referred to, it was on Crooked River Road. And these are four to have some exhibits to shares, so you get an idea of what was down there.
Okay. Were those called humps or bumps or what?
They're actually called speed tables.
Oh, speed tables.
Which are longer. Uh, the second page shows the details and the third page shows the layout as details. Um, so, uh, speed tables are generally more accepted these days than this speed homes. Speed tables are a little wider and they're better suited for emergency vehicles. And as you say, they don't bang your car up. So that would, that would, this would be an appropriate use for that. In terms of cost, what you asked about? And, you know, I contemplated two or three and we'll, you know, we'll have to apply some tuning adjustment on where those are located. Obviously, we can fit it at a driveway location or near fire hydrant, you know, certain things we can think about. So if it's two, the cost would be around sixty-four hundred dollars. If there's three, you have ninety-six hundred dollars. It also includes signing that goes with it. And we would probably also include some payment markings. And that's detailed on the second page on how that's, how that's done. Mr. Massey answered some of my questions.
So if I was to go over this and skateboards, would that be all right?
It would.
Do you think that this is more a need of, and I'm sure, I know they need to slow down because they need to slow down all over town. But what, what about sidewalks? But sidewalks are going to be expensive. They're about twenty thousand dollars a block.
Yes, it, it's apparent that this area is being used by pedestrians and bodies. So if we can accommodate them off of the travel lane, that's, that is better and safer certainly.
But then they complain of blind driveways, sidewalks not going to help the blind driveway issue?
That is true. It sounds like there is a some distance problem based on the profile geometry of the roadway. And there are standards for that. There are ways to mitigate that with some flashing lights that, that may not really be appropriate in the residential neighborhood.
Yeah, my father boasts at night. All right. Does anyone have questions for Mr. Large at this time? Okay. We thank you very much. This has been helpful. So I'm going to ask the attorney now, if we were to even consider something like this, we need to notify a large area of folks. Is that correct with the, to even consider?
Yes, I need to check. It is a city street, so it's not county or state. But we do need to probably, I'll check the statute. But we, most of the time, you have visitable community people affected by, by the property owners there. Make sure they're on board, but it sounds like there is petition that has much of its property.
How many folks were in the petition? At the petition?
Eight.
Eight?
And then that's all that lived within three hundred.
But you was getting more people to dump.
And if the city, I mean, certainly if the city, I mean, just period that there's a health, safety, welfare issue, we can probably, ourselves, we should get figure on the cost and that's.
It's used a lot more since the Dollar Store could be, so the main road to the Dollar Store now.
So I would say that you could plan and just say, you could budget ten thousand dollars for it. And I've already talked to Mr. Dashie. He's, he's called me about it and they're aware that if it, if, you know, we can, if we do decide to do it, if the board does decide, that it can't happen until the next budget season. Uh, which it would be October first, the next budget starts October first. We have to budget for it.
I understand that.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have five thousand dollars for fireworks, so. And if they need speed hunts, they might get upset if we spend ten thousand dollars on fireworks. I had thought about referring it to our traffic safety team, the Franklin County Traffic Safety Team. They address all of the cities, streets in the county, not just Franklin County. And since we're, we'll probably have to discuss this again, we're going to have another meeting in June and we'll just talk about it. They have FDOT, this district pedestrian safety managers and engineers, safety engineer managers attend that meeting and Highway Patrol captain attends it. And so, you know, we have a lot of folks that have experience with traffic management, a traffic, a person from the emergency management center actually attends that meeting. So we can discuss it too and I'll, I'll bring back what their recommendations were. You know, it's, it's possible part of that area is in the CRA, I believe. CRA district runs right through the middle of the First Baptist Church. Mr. Sisk is just out of the CRA that I believe where one, if you put one at the bottom of the hill, is that what you were thinking? Mr. Large or?
Yes. Kind of wanted to put some thought into it.
Okay.
But if you put some in series, then they can't accelerate, you know, by the time they get to the next one, they have to slow down again. So, so having one at the bottom is, is possible.
So if one might get in the CRA.
What I'm understanding, Tom, is coming over the hill is the problem.
So that would be up to the engineer to decide how to slow them down, where to place it. But this would be a first for Caravelle now, speed.
No, there's speed. We had speed bumps on the, um, Second Street. You know where Rex Massey lived? When they paved that road, we used to have speed bumps on that road.
But they're not there now, are they?
They were that road, they would not come along. But we used to have speed bumps on that road.
So, Mr. Hartman, then you will check the Florida statute to see how we would have to.
Yeah, there are no requirements.
And then can we, what do you all think about tabling this until, because we can't, we can't do anything anyway to the next budget season? So would someone like to make a motion to table this discussion?
I'll do the table.
Okay, so we have a motion to table this discussion concerning speed calming devices by Commissioner Allen and second by Commissioner Massey. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and that motion carries. Thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Massey. And so we'll meet again first Thursday of June and we'll discuss it again. See whether or not we should direct Mr. Large to do some research on, further research. Okay, item two, discussion and possible action concerning special exception to allow residents in C one mixed use zone. The address is two oh four Northwest Eleventh Street, corner of Ryan Drive and Ninety-Eight. And it looks like we have the new owner here.
Yes, we do. It's awfully nice to be here. I'm a newbie at Caravelle.
All right.
I do live in Alabama sometimes.
What's your name, sir?
Roll Tide, no, it's Christopher Kane.
Mr. Kane?
K A N E. Christopher Kane. And I generally go by Kip Kane.
Kip?
Kip, K I P. It's a recognized nickname for Christopher, like Christopher, Kit Carson. And I got kept instead of kid. So I'm the new resident at, right up, right down the street or up the street from the mayor. And I, this is the first time we had a chance to meet her. Because the last time she stopped by the house, I was unloading a truck or a trailer and I couldn't stop my unloading. So I'm here to request a, a special exemption to reside in a residential property that is zoned commercial on the corner of Eleventh Street and Highway Ninety-Eight. I, when I came to apply for a business license, I was told by the county court that I needed to come before the council and ask or request a special exemption. So I followed her direction and I noticed everybody within two hundred feet. I sent them a certified letter requesting a return address. And I received them all back and I think that was, well, it was sixty-three dollars worth. And I did not get one returned from a development company. And I don't know where they reside. I think Tallahassee. I know I've got all the tickets here of what we need to do. So I'm here to ask for your approval to live in a residential property, zoned commercial, which the previous people that I acquired the property to resided in. So whatever the technicality, it's not grandfathered. I'm here to ask for your approval. Did I say it correct? Okay.
You said it correct.
Okay.
And very elegant. Appreciate it.
Well, thank you. We are going to, you have a business license and the business is called Fisbo Depot. Will be officially opening in June. I did join the Chamber of Commerce and we're going to invite all you all over to come and see exactly what Fisbo Depot does. What do you think it does?
For sale by owner.
I like that. A lot of people don't know that. Somebody told me it's good for Florida State Motors Organization.
That would be a good one too.
Huh, okay, maybe. Maybe they'd like to acquire that property when I'm through.
What is for sale by owner?
For sale by owner.
Well, I mean, I know that, what are you selling?
Oh, what we're doing is, I'm in the marine business and the corporation that I have, the one corporation I have is called BK Marine LLC. That's how my checks come. What we're doing, we're supplying a service that if you have a watercraft, whether it be a powerboat or a sailboat or jet skis or a kayak or a canoe or a trailorable trailer, nothing with an engine, motor, you can put it on the front yard behind the white picket fence and we're going to charge you rent of twenty-five dollars a week. It'll be advertised, you can, you can sell it, you're the buyer, I'm the seller. The buyer will be able to approach me or the seller directly. We'll give you all the information on it and at that particular time, you're free to negotiate. If you want us to act as a broker, we will charge you a five percent brokerage fee, a half of what the normal ten percent for a boat. We're only taking small boats, but there's many people that have a boat that they, damn near, abandoned and it's on the side of their home and maybe that for sale sign sort of melted away and they're moving. Or they have a boat in their backyard and it's fenced, it's got a big Labrador. Now, how are you going to get in to see that boat if you do not come to the location at the foot of the bridge? Twenty, twenty-four, seven. And it's got location exposure, location exposure, location.
All righty.
And that's what we're doing.
All right, for Mr. Kane?
Yes, ma'am.
We appreciate your explanation and welcome to the neighborhood.
Thank you, it's nice to be here.
And that, that day I stopped by, it was the Riverfront Festival and I mean, I was in a rush.
So was I. And I apologize, but you're welcome anytime.
I'll walk down there.
And please do.
Yeah, I know.
You don't want any more selling, sir? Thank you, Mr. Massey.
Okay, so we have a, and, and, you know, Mr. Osgood was in there already.
Yes, he was.
Living in there. So we have a motion by Commissioner Mathis and a second by Commissioner Massey. Is there any more discussion to approve this second special exception? Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you all very much. And that motion carries. Ms. Keisha, that was Mathis and Massey. I got it, okay. Now we know what's going on. Thank you. All right, so we're going to move on now to discussion regarding marketing the Hexport Building. And, you know, we, I, I made a little mission statement. It's not engraved in stone, but y'all are welcome to take a look at it, come back with suggestions or, you know, we need to figure out, we've got to do everything we can to try to market this building. It's our best asset, that asset, thank you. To, we've got to do everything we can to try to identify a company or companies who might lease it to multiple companies, you know, that they can, somebody who can really conduct some business in a rural area and an area that really has no major corridor access. And we've already, a tremendous amount of money and opportunities have been lost over the years with that building between just, you know, businesses trying to operate and there's, they just, you know, just wasn't happening. The City of Caravelle citizens have put eight hundred thousand dollars into that and then a six hundred and fifty thousand dollar CD EG grant. And I believe Hexport folks in the beginning put some money into it. So that's a huge investment on that building that's never been, had a return on the investment. Five percent on eight hundred thousand dollars over ten years would be five hundred and three thousand dollars earnings, you know, that had been in the CDs. So everyone wants to see the building, a productive part of our community and economy. And everyone says Caravelle needs jobs. They ask me, what are we doing to get jobs? And here's an opportunity to try to market this building, the best way, proper way and get some, get some jobs or some companies in here that can make a solid plan and, and do something for our community. So just want to go ahead and introduce Mr. Harwell. He's Director of Science and Research, Florida State University and Institute of Government. And he's here, he's graciously volunteered his time and expertise to come to counsel us and we appreciate it.
I turned it on.
Thank you.
Probably don't need it, but thank you, Mayor, Commissioner, Mr. Hartman, Ms. Gordon, Ms. Keisha. Thank you so much for allowing me to be here tonight. To start out with, I'd like to just give you a little bit of a background about me. I am currently employed by Florida State University through the Florida Institute of Government. Prior to my employment with Florida State University, I managed an airport in Lake City, Florida. It is a fairly large airport. At the time, whenever I became the manager, it was sort of stagnant, but nevertheless, in a period of about five years, we were able to do some pretty amazing things. We have an eight thousand three foot runway there, so there's obviously a lot of things you can do in an eight thousand three foot runway as opposed to a four thousand foot runway. So during the course of my tenure there as the airport manager, in addition to the operating budget that I managed, I probably had about twenty million dollars worth of grant money that I managed. budget that I managed, I probably had about $20 million worth of grant money that I managed for me with FAA, FDOT. Other agencies that I was able to work with with regards to grants, or the USDA, the CDVG, DEO, all the acronyms, you know, you sometimes meet with these folks, and you just kind of want to be like you're in the Wheel of Fortune, can you just bow, you know, because there's so many acronyms and whatnot. But nevertheless, was very fortunate there in my tenure with, with the City of Lake City, does some really, really great things, and, and pretty excited about that. Roto grant through, through one of the state agencies. We were very fortunate there that we had a MRO. If you're not familiar with what an MRO is, it's the Maintenance Repair and Overhaul Operation by the name of HECO. They were formerly TIMCO. They employ roughly around, I'd say around, around 900 now. So they were on our airfield, so I interacted with them as well. They had contracts with JetBlue, United, and so as a result of the grant, which we did a hangar remodel, we, we were able to attract Southwest, and so they were coming to Lake City, and as a result, provided 200 jobs. And so the first phase of that grant provided 200 jobs, the second phase is teed up to provide 400 jobs, and then as a result of that grant, it will have a carryover of about 200 jobs every year for the next 15 years. So that gives you a little bit of a background as far as my aviation. I could go on, and I had to be very careful because as I was listening to all the discussion up here with fireworks, and, and streets, and speed tables, I guess it is, and speed pumps, my mind was just running back there because I've been in a lot of other capacities where we were able to make some, make some decisions on some of those very items. So I flew into Carabelle Thompson Airport, I guess it was around the early part of April, and in the approach to your airport, I noticed a very large building. And so I began discussions with the pilot in the air about that building. Upon landing, we continued those discussions as I had an opportunity to visit your assets, look at your T-hangers, noted some, some issues associated with your T-hangers, which Mr. Sullivan has identified tonight. So I'm familiar with some of those same issues. We had 31 T-hangers, we had four box T-hangers, and then we had seven commercial hangers, which would house A320s, nose-to-nose, so you have two of those, nose-to-nose, nose-to-nose, seven hangers. So I'm familiar with problems associated with hangers, and tenants, and compliance issues with FAA and FDOT. But whenever we landed and had an opportunity to go through the assets, I was very curious about the building. Obviously, I think it's a 60,000 square foot building, 65,000 square foot building, a tremendous asset that I see that you have here in Carabelle, Florida. It's so critical that the council, as you make those decisions, and you start thinking about how you want to market that building, how you want to approach the process of marketing that building, and I'd certainly be willing to help in that process as well, it's, it's critical as to who you market that building to. I explained this, I think I was to, I don't know if it was to Mr. Sullivan, but I did explain to him that, you know, really, you know, all it would take would be, would be one business owner flying in for whatever reason, whether it was for the seafood festival or whether it was for a chartered fishing tour, trip or something of that nature, when they flew in and they saw that building from the air, just as I did, when I saw that building from the air, all it would take is that one person to say, wow, I'd really like to move, relocate, establish, or set up my business here in Carabelle, Florida, certainly with the coastal views that you guys have here, it's tremendous. And so having said that, it's critically important that you, you, you market and you lease that building to the right person because, for example, if, if that same person flew in, a business owner with an aircraft, maybe with a business that he could provide jobs to Carabelle, which I know that's something of interest for all of you, as well as myself, as well as all of my colleagues in the industry with economic development, if he were to fly in and that building were to be leased out to someone else, or maybe not even leased, maybe just an end kind, kind of service to someone, it would be critical for the commission, for the community, if that building was occupied by someone, whenever someone like that individual came into this area and wanted to lease that building and provide jobs, and also provide revenue, which is obviously something that every city and every county is concerned with, obviously. So I want to tie it back into something that I heard earlier in the meeting tonight. I was very encouraged whenever the, the council, you and the mayor approved for a engineering firm, consulting firm, or at least to go out for an RFQ, RP, RFQ, whatever the process you guys use here. And the reason that that, that kind of struck with me is, is the fact that when you, now that you've decided to do that, that engineering firm, they're probably going to have the same opinion, or at least something similar to the opinion that I have. If they fly into this area, or if they drive into this area, as soon as they get close enough to see that building, which it doesn't take much because of the size of it, they're going to become increasingly interested in that building, and as to how we can tie that in. Because you must understand that that building, as critical as it is to not only the City of Carabelle, is also critical to the advancement, the improvements, the marketing, the whole ball of wax, so to speak, for the airport. So I'm here tonight to just kind of open discussion as to how we could do this, you could do this. If you would like my assistance in helping you with the marketing of it, I'll be glad to do that. One thing that I would mention that obviously I have, I work for MSU, but I went away for 17 years and managed the airport there in Lake City and done some, some other things. I've worked at District 3, DOT, so I understand the, the DOT world, I understand the FAA world, I understand the grants associated with, and can be used for airports with USDA and CDVG and DEO, rural infrastructure grants. Those are some of the type of grants that I was very successful in putting together to help the airport. So I would be willing to help in any way, in any capacity for the advancement of your airport here. And a couple of reasons that I have a vested interest. Number one, I'm from a rural community, so I understand sort of the struggles that are associated with rural communities. Not only am I, grew up in a rural community, I grew up in a rural community, I have a vested interest in the fact that I actually, believe it or not, own property in Franklin County. I own that property as a result of my grandfather who passed away. Now, how many of you locals here know where Two Mile is? Anybody know where Two Mile is? Absolutely. Well, my grandfather owned an oyster house in Two Mile, Florida, if you want to call it Two Mile, Florida, Appalachian call, but he owned an oyster house right next to Donnie Wilson's Seafood. So in essence, because it's Franklin County, not only do I have a vested interest of wanting to, to help the rural communities, I have a vested interest just for the simple fact that it's in Franklin County, and I want to be able to help in some way, shape, form, or fashion.
Okay, well, and you and I haven't really, we have not talked about this. I'm going to ask a question right now that I've not, I've not asked. Are you, are you, do you, is this a service that you would charge for?
As of now, I don't know. I mean, obviously, I realize, I certainly realize, I've, I've listened, I mean, I've heard the fireworks story. I think that, you know, it's something that's, that could be certainly looked at extremely closely with the folks that I have to report to. As you know, the services that I provided, and, and I don't want to, I don't want to put it on the spot, but I provided, in the very back back there, there's an ALP hanging up against that wall, that, that didn't cause you anything. I brought that, I put, I blew it up, put it on a, on a board, a phone board, so that when you're meeting with your airport advisory committees, when you're meeting with the FDOT, when you're meeting with the FAA, you can put that on an easel, and you can point out different aspects of your airport. So as of now, no.
So would you be, are you interested in consulting us how to find a marketing firm? Are you interested in, in marketing?
I could do either one, whichever, at the pleasure of the council.
And we haven't talked about this. I met Mr. Harwell at the airport when he was there, looking at that asset, and then the Hexport wasn't available to look in, but I have sent him pictures of the entire. He actually came and toured this building here, and he thinks he might be able to help us with whatever the outcome is, this, this facility that we're in. But, you know, we, I'm, I'm interested in how do we find a company to market, and what kind of, of businesses do we market to? You know, how do we find someone that's going to be compatible with the community and the surroundings of the lack of transportation?
Sure. Well, obviously, the, the way to start that conversation, and that would be through the council's decision, your decision, Mayor, as to what you want that building to be, do you want it to be something tied to your, to the aviation world? You know, and I mean, I made some, a list of things, and those are, trust me, whenever I throw these names, these ideas out, it has absolutely, it's just for discussion. And I want to, I want to caution you and put a disclaimer in here that there are some things that I may mention here that I would be willing to talk to, speak with you off, off record, to the side, to say that this may not be the ideal situation, but these are just some ideas that you possibly could consider. One of the things that you could consider, obviously, is a maintenance and, and avionics type industry there at the airport in that building. You could consider, if you wanted a jump school, a skydiving school, if you wanted something like that, again, these are some ideas that I would be willing to discuss with you off record and tell you, and educate you on the pros and the cons of these different concepts. I spoke with a colleague at a ready meeting, if you don't know what ready is. Ready is a rural, or, excuse me, a reo. Does anybody know what a reo is, a rural area of opportunity? Well, your reo happens to be, you're in the reo of Opportunity, Florida. So whenever I looked at Opportunity, Florida's website, I did three searches for this property, this particular building, on their website. I typed in office buildings, I typed in industrial buildings, and I typed in office sites for Franklin County, to see if it would populate that building on their website, and none of the three came up. So there's an opportunity right there, just in the preliminary stages, for us to put this out there through your reo that provides these services for your region, for Franklin County, to put the building out there, and that just comes with the specifications of the building, and we can get that, and I can help you, Mayor, or anyone else for that matter, get that on Opportunity, Florida's website. So that's the first step, that's one step that we could put out there to get the building introduced to the market. But during one of the ready meetings that I was just recently at, this particular colleague mentioned something about UASs, which is unmanned aircraft systems, through the University of Florida's Urban Planning Department. Again, these are just concepts. I know that you have a USDA or Forestry Services right across the street. There may be an opportunity for additional staging. Whenever I managed the airport in Lake City, we had a USDA tanker base, we had P3s that fall fires out of that facility, and so we had a tanker base on site, so, you know, that could come, you know, with some extensions of your own way, that's a possibility down the road. But maybe a corporate freezer system, maybe a climate-controlled storage facility. Of course, you can always put the building on the market, straight out, if you wanted to do something like that. I heard a gentleman just recently talk about selling boats. Maybe it could be a boat manufacturer. Maybe it could be a lure manufacturing place, where they manufacture lures. These are just way out there, high-altitude concepts and ideas, nothing concrete, but just something that I wanted to just kind of put out there, and it's certainly nothing that is in stone, but something that we could certainly discuss. And, and I want to, I want to just go in just a little bit further, if I may, I don't know how much time I've got, but I would like to just say that when you're making decisions, and the mayor alluded to, you know, the building here, when I came here, I visited in the first part of, I guess it was April, I got an opportunity to come over here. I don't know if you aren't, but I am, burning up.
Yeah, you have on a jacket.
And so when I walked in the building, as soon as I walked in the building, I flew here on Tuesday, and then I flew back on Tuesday, and after visiting the building, and I immediately got in the vehicle and left, and went the next day to Dixie Canyon, Cross City, if you know where that's at. And I'd been part of their planning process, so I helped them and assisted them with an airshow. So we, we pulled off an airshow, we had airshows at our airport, we had the United States Air Force Thunderbird, so unfortunately, they're just not large enough for that, but we did have an airshow there. So that was Wednesday. Wednesday night, I made a telephone call because I know a friend of mine who's part of the International City Managers Association, another city manager friend of mine, they're in the process of building the city hall. So I opened up some discussions with this individual about the funding package, as in the funding resources that they were using for the construction of their new city hall. So I'm not only just interested in your airport, I'm interested in just the, the general daily business of, of the City of Carabelle, and any way I can help in that, I certainly would be willing to do that. But with that being said, when you're making these kinds of decisions, understand, and I think the mayor alluded to it earlier about the restore. I think you talked a little bit about the restore, Franklin County. There's some opportunities out there, you know, through these grants, through these agencies that I mentioned, the DEO, the rural infrastructure grants, USDA, the CDVG grants. Certainly, a lot of those are tied to jobs, so you've got to have job creation, you know, to, to tie it to that particular grant or respective grant. But Franklin County as a whole has a, and I don't know how much, but they're, they're slated to receive money through the restore. Some say upwards of $23.6 million over the next 15 years, and can expect to receive $4.2 million, possibly in the next year. How that, when that comes to pass is yet to be discovered. Now, as a result of that, the airport, possibly the city hall, could benefit from some of these, some of this revenue, of this money that's going to be coming in. Obviously, this is a direct result of the deepwater rising oil spill, so there's opportunities that may present itself. As a result, you may be able to do some things with your, your master plan. I understand you want to do a master plan update, you want to do a new ALP. So the, when you're making these decisions as a council, this is just, just advice to you that there's, there's, there's sources out there, there's resources out there, there's revenue out there that's, that's possibly on the, on the table. So I know that there's a desperate need here to relocate, to get into another building, to get out of the heat, and certainly August is on its way, but just, just be mindful that the resources are out there, and you could possibly tap into those as well.
Okay, all right. Well, then, we're, we're just going to go ahead and move forward because we do have another item on the agenda. Does, does anyone have questions for Mr. Harwell this time? All right, well, we thank you for coming in and talking with us.
Thank you, sir.
We appreciate it. Okay, all right. Thank you so much. No action on this one, it's for discussion only, and we'll discuss it again, we can kind of open up our minds and see how we can, can market it. You know, what do we want to have, one or two businesses, or three businesses, or affiliated with each other, or not? If we get some new engineers on board, they may have some suggestions.
We know, we're up in the new management.
Yeah. All right, then, we'll, we'll move on to old business of the item number one under old business, is discussion and possible action concerning relocation to the city hall. So I'm just going to try to be fast here. At the April 18th, I just wanted to review at the April 18th special meeting, Mr. Harman reported the school board requested the city to deback the gym so it could be used for a bus barn, and we made a counter offer and, you know, to return everything back to them, and so Mr. Harman has talked to the school board attorney on that, and he can go ahead now, and if you don't mind, just tell us what the outcome is on that.
Sure, and obviously, this is just attorney to attorney. She informed me that the school board no longer wants the gym, they've come up with other arrangements, and, and she does not think they would be interested in taking the property back with all, with the building on it, and that's it.
Okay.
They essentially rejected our, our offer and basically re-auctioned to give the property back, and we don't need to worry about the gym anymore.
They don't, they don't want the gym either.
Right.
All right. We're just going to have to make our own decisions regarding that school board. Move forward with relocating them in the bag. Right back at this, at this point. April the 6th, we had our regular meeting, and at that meeting, we motioned and had approval to begin the necessary steps to purchase Brackton property, directed Mr. Harman to draw a sales purchase contract for the commission's approval, and directed Courtney to order an appraisal. So then back on, and then on the 18th, the commission approved the sales purchase contract prepared by Mr. Harman, and had some additional terms on it, and then we directed Courtney to sign the contract with final closing. to sign the contract with final closing being, one of those additional terms, final closing would be whenever the city enters into a contract with the builder to construct a city hall on that property. And Courtney was to begin the protocol regarding purchasing property, including order and appraisal, a survey, and a topographical survey. So now, Mr. Hartman wants to report that there's additional item on the, on the.
Yeah, just a minor, just a mi, one minor revision to the contract, just want to bring to the commission's attention, is that we have added, in discussion with Ms. Bragden, a February 1, 2018, kind of drop dead date, to alleviate any concern that we would just tie up the property for extended period of time. So we don't, so we don't tie it up.
Right, that's all.
Just while we're trying to make up our minds, she can, she has an end to decide.
And that's to have a signed contract by that date?
To notify her whether we are, yeah, to, to say, hey, we got 30 days to close.
Yeah, okay. With the contract?
With the contract. If we've signed a contract and we're ready to close. If we don't tell her by that date, then it's, it's a flip, and she can sell her properties on us.
All right, and thank you. Then on the April the 18th, commission motioned and approved to offer C C Land Company $10,000 for purchase of five lots immediately adjacent to the Bragden property. And have we, have we, a letter was sent on the 19th to the C C Land Company, and can you go back to them, Ms. Courtney?
Yes, I received an email back that says that they declined their offer.
They declined. Did a counter offer?
No counter offer, just that they declined it. We do not have a counter offer at this time.
All right, so we'll, we'll move forward with what we've got. How's that? Then we've got a questionnaire that's been developed for department heads, employees, and employees who work at city hall facility. It's a, and then we have also a short questionnaire for the commissioners regarding commission of chambers. And architects generally must always pass out questionnaires whenever they're designing large office buildings with medical facilities or something. So this is standard, and just so that everybody can have input and have, you know, a piece of the pie. We want to, we want to understand what the staff, what their needs are, and what their desires are, and also understand what are the needs and requirements, and what are desires. And so this will help us understand. And you're going to distribute this, Courtney, to staff tomorrow, or does the staff have?
Yes.
Okay, they already have them.
Oh, yes.
On the 28th, Courtney and the chief and I visited Mexico Beach. They had a new city hall, and we were there in the morning, and that's their very second morning to be in that city hall. They'd been through five different buildings, and they were, they were very happy. They liked the builders that they used. They, they broke ground 1st of January, and they moved into it this past April 27th. And it was, it's about 3,400 square foot, 462 or 63,000 dollars. That included their site prep, landscaping, furnishings. They're going to have multi-file systems.
How much?
462 or 463. But it's, it's smaller than what, you know, she's got a floor plan of it there. It's much.
That's a brand new building.
Brand spanking new. And it has, but now 3,400 square feet, a little bit more, like 6,000, you know, maybe 6,500, because they don't have their police department, they don't have a police department, and they use their chambers at the, their community building. So, and they own their community building. They don't have to do this. But they did agree that it was a huge hassle to have meetings somewhere else, because they sometimes need documents, and they don't have it, and having it always set up, set up a microphone, set up a tape recorder, it was a huge hassle. But they had the land right there near a park, or within a park. They already own that land, and so they just decided to build some office facilities. They'd been working out of their water plant, building in a big room. The whole staff, they had seven people on their staff, a coding officer, and a building inspector, that kind of thing. And they had been working in three, three years, just in a big room. So we don't want that, certainly, we don't want that to happen to our staff, that they get relocated somewhere, and then they end up three years or more. So we, we've got a plan carefully. Then on Tuesday, we're going to go back, the chief and I are going to go to Soft Chapi, and maybe Ms. Keisha, I don't know. Did you already look at that building?
No, I mean, I might have.
Okay, so she might go with us, and maybe Miranda, Renee, or Courtney, you know, they're going to have a different schedule out.
No, they don't have the police department in Soft Chapi.
No, but they have a huge water department, because they, they, you know, supply all the water in Locotown County, and their water department. But they have, they have a lot of money, because they make money off their water department, and it paid for all of this. So you see, they have a huge break room, the restrooms are big. But, you know, you could have their police department on one end, and your staff on the other end, and the commission. So.
So this is Soft Chapi?
Yes, this is Soft Chapi. And this one, the seventh, back in 2008, was, I had the notes at home, around 730,000 dollars. They owned the land already, and it's 4,200 square feet. And it was 700. But this is, this is a really nice building, and it has all these covered porches, which is, you know, something fancy that we don't, you know, we can't deal with that. But it's something, you know, it's interesting to look at the full plans and hear their input, and see how they function in a location, you know, built specifically for city hall operations. And everyone likes it, all the staff so far, and the other one, because it has secure vest to build. If you enter here and come into the commission, there's restrooms right here, so you can enter here. This is where they take water collection. They also have a bulletproof drive-through, which, you know, they, they've got thousands of water accounts. We don't need that necessarily, with 16, 1400 water accounts. But come into a secure area, restroom for the public, restroom that comes straight here, and then you can have your police department here, and a T shape. So, and, and the Forest Service here is a T shape. So, you know, you might want to go out and take a look at that.
If you ever went to their original place, you'd understand why they delight in anything.
They moved, the, the Forest Service, they moved that building, the one that was out here, you know, is, is over here, too. They moved it and renovated it. It's just a long hallway. So, then, we, we met with the Sharie Courtney and Miranda, and I met with Ms. Sharie Wood and Donnie Day yesterday for about an hour and a half, and we had one excellent discussion. I had submitted some questions to them regarding new construction and existing building, purchasing an existing building. And the questions were basically the same, but, you know, I wanted to make sure they answered. And I'm just going to try to review it real quick, and y'all take us home and look at it. But they, all the questions and answers, really, all the answers apply to an existing building just as well as, as a, I've got to find my notes right here, they are. New construction. Timeline for construction to draw is 12 to 18 months. Usually, 18 months is the maximum. They'll give you 90 days if there's extenuating circumstances. USDA loans are maximum of 30-year amortization. Interest rates are determined by the regional president. But we can qualify for tax exempt status, but the attorney would have to prepare documents for that. So that would, all of these now, keep in mind, apply for new construction or purchasing, purchasing existing. And then, so, you know, on your loan application, we would have to submit a tax exempt status. That would be similar to what was done with fire truck financing. Closing costs run 3% to 5% of the loan amount, and that includes 1% orientation fee, origination fee. And the more inspections that are required on the build site, the higher the fee. And we know that F and B, just, this is just an example, F and B builders out of St. Joe built the Mexico Beach, and hearsay is that they're excellent builders, and they hardly have to go out, the banks hardly have to go out and inspect on their site. They're such qualified builders. So then that may, if you have a builder like that, good reputation with the banks, then they don't have to go out and inspect so much, and it keeps your loan cost, your closing cost down. And that also, that 3% to 5% closing cost can be adjusted as well for the tax exempt status. Your USDA will allow you to pay off the principal early or in full, or in increments. At the first five years, there's a tiered penalty, but after five years, you can begin to pay off with no penalty. All site prep, parking facilities, construction fees, renovations, communication systems, security systems, new office furnishings, filing systems, fire suppression systems, fireproof record room, wind resistant construction, signage, landscaping, generators, are termed soft cost items, and they can be incorporated into the construction draw in a long-term USDA loan. Any costs associated with construction or renovations, such as demolition of existing facilities for replacement, permitting, architectural design, engineering, water irrigation, can also be incorporated into the loan. All insurance requirements must be met. The owners have to, the contractors have to provide, you know, all the standard insurance, and then owners must provide builder's risk insurance until the certificate of occupancy is issued. When it's complete, when you're, you're coming down to your closing, your independent appraisal must meet 8% of the loan's value ratio. All supporting documentation, including construction, architectural plans and specifications, construction and renovation breakdown, contractor's bids, revenue and expense projections documentation. That includes your, the expected cost of maintaining the building, tax exempt status, exempt status documentation, appraisal survey. All of those are required before closing and with your, your loan application documents. And I just want to mention here, revenues and expenses projections documentation. This is required, and this is something that the CPA is going to have to deal with. They have to know, you know, what our, the bank wants to know, what our revenues are, what our expenses are, where are we going to come up with the money. And they also want to know what we projected the building will cost to name that, whatever building it is. Ms., well, I'll, I'll mention that in a minute. Major renovations are treated as, as a construction loan, it's a part of the, they say, in purchasing an existing building. We need to go ahead and make your major renovations at that time, and not, you know, kick the can down the road, you know, several years later, because you have to refinance, it's going to cost a lot more money. If there's a change in the market, change in property values, or a change in the city's financial status, it could be that you can't qualify for a loan down the road. So they say it's best to get it all done upfront. Banks, they, they recommend the most cost-effective way to proceed is to complete, complete everything that you, you need at the original construction time. Ms. Sharie Wood took a look at the spreadsheet that Miranda had prepared for us on the cost of operating this building. She, she said that any of these scenarios at the bottom, we could fund very well with the money that we're spending right now to operate this building. Mr., Mr. Gay said that we, an existing two-story building, that it would definitely, no doubt about it, had to have an elevator, would have to have elevator access. So we have one person saying no, one person saying yes. So before I, I would ever consider an existing two-story building, we would have to have that researched on the Florida statute. I know that we wouldn't be able to qualify for C D B G grants, because we just had to do several resolutions and ordinances for the C D B G grant on Northwest Avenue V to make all of our public access facilities and parks with handicap parking. We've got to have an electric door out here. We've got to have our water fountains, you know, where they're, you know, you press them like this. So, you know, we're not fully handicap accessible. We're not going to be able to qualify for C D B G grants. And also, if you have any employees that ever need to go upstairs, even for property management, and something happens to that employee, that they become somehow handicapped, maybe in an accident, now you're no longer an equal opportunity employer. So that, that right there stops you from, from getting grants. The, I sent them, I asked them to give me some payments on 800, 900, a million, and 1.2 million. And these are the estimates they brought back, as you can, you can see down here, that it was calculated 4% interest rate, and they said the interest rate would be lower because of the city's tax exempt status. So that's just a.
Really good payments, it's almost cheap, and what we just paid for that, keep it clear.
Well.
Almost.
That's half of it.
Oh, yeah.
It's all just cheap. I mean, that's, that really.
Well, you, you know, so I just wanted to report that to you as food for thought, and we're going to have to move forward with seeking out the CPA's help and starting to prepare revenues and expenses projection. We can't project just yet on the building maintenance, what that will cost, because we haven't done that yet. So we just, we just need to go ahead and move forward with our.
CPA?
Yeah, CPA. Get our topographical, our survey, and then have Russell prepare us some type of a site prep conceptual, scope of work on that, what it would cost to prepare the site prep, and maybe some type of a footprint, how a footprint would fit on there, 6,6500 square feet somewhere in there. And then we'll start aggressively working on the floor plans, once we understand how the building can properly fit on the property, where the parking facilities will be, and what, what the staff answers their questionnaire.
Well, I make a motion for that. For Russell to start, he is, for the CPA to start, to in the paper, what you know.
Okay. All right.
Do we need a motion for them to start doing that, to move forward?
Well, you know, if, I think that would be all right, because if we get back the, survey, and the appraisal, and the topo between now and the next meeting, if you, if we did motion and approved that, then Russell could start working on it instead of waiting until next meeting.
Yeah, that's good. I'll make a motion.
Okay, so we're going to have a motion by Commissioner Massey, then to allow Mr. Lawrence to start preparing the site prep conceptual.
Yes, the CPA.
And, and to, will Courtney and I, and Miranda, we'll just.
Okay.
And then, so that, Mr., if, if, if all the information comes in right, then we have a motion for Russell to move forward by Commissioner Massey. Do we have a second?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we have a second by Commissioner Walton. Is there any more discussion? Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. And, and you say aye? Okay. All right. And so we have Commissioner Massey, Mayor Lopez, Commissioner Mathis, Commissioner Walton, Yay, Commissioner Allen Nuth, and the motion carries. All right. And I think that's the last item on our agenda. So, is there any further business? All right, no further business. May I have a motion to adjourn?
I can adjourn.
Okay. And a second?
I'll say.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Mathis. So we have a motion by Commissioner Massey, a second by Commissioner Mathis. Any more discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And the motion carries. Okay.